Welcome to the West Carrollton Board of Education meeting for December the thirteenth, twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Ryan Sloan, please call the roll.
Ms. Harvey is absent.
Yep.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Luell?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mundy?
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I'd ask you to lead us. It's your last meeting.
Yeah, it's your last meeting.
Go ahead.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's my jinxified. It's like, you know. All right. All right, so next we will have introductions. Folks up here at the table and on the side tables. And we have the agenda, we'll get to that. Yep, we'll get to that, Mr. Sloan. We'll start with my far right, Mr. Sloan, who just took our role for us. Mr. Ryan Sloan's our treasurer. Standing right up next to him. Denise, our newest student rep, Denise Egmore. And Madeline Keane sits next to her, she's also a student rep. Both of you guys are seniors with us this year. The space between them, Leslie, belongs to Autumn Harvey. This would be her last meeting tonight, but she is home with a fever and won't be here. So I'm sorry to say that, and yes, she'll miss her last meeting, but she is going to help us with CTC this year or next year, so we'll certainly see her again. Then, and beginning to my right is Leslie Miller, our board vice president. My name is John Lu Allen, and we're president for just a little longer, in calendar year, and then we switch over in January to someone else. To my left is our superintendent, Dr. Andy Townsend. To her left, for his last meeting, is Joe Cox. You don't get the point of that today, you're not paying attention. And then immediately to his left is Dave Mundy, serving his finals, not final, but second year, end of the second year. To the left on the table, to our left, too, we've got some administrators who join us every meeting. We appreciate their attendance. We'll start with Devin Barry, who's our director of human resources. I believe Ms. Tyce is here, but she's not sitting there right now. She's our assistant superintendent, she'll be joining us shortly. Next to where she would be is Julia Jones, who's our director of curriculum. And finally, Jack Kang, our business manager, sits at the end of the table. All right, so without further ado, we'll be along with to our agenda item. Next on the agenda should be for us to approve our agenda for tonight, which is item five. So I just need a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda, and we do have an agenda as well.
A motion. Second.
It's an easy change, we just need to remove item number fifteen.
All right. Mr. Sloan, if you would, call the roll.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Luell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right. Item six is only will be comments from the public related to agenda items. We don't have comments for right now, but we will have comments later in our general session for comments. Item seven on the agenda is our communication update, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. Good evening. So first off, I wanted to remind everyone the ways you can find out what's happening in the school district are website, westcarrolltonschools.com. You can access Facebook at West Carrollton City Schools or Twitter at West Carrollton Schools, or I'm sorry, excuse me, WC City Schools. Winter break, it's coming. The second quarter ends December twenty-first, that's on a Thursday, and the first day of winter break is Friday, December twenty-second. Students will return on Monday, January eighth. The high school just did a blood drive last week, the high school student council blood drive. They received fifty-five units of blood, and this is a potential one hundred and sixty-five lives saved in our community. Fifty-four of the units received were from first-time donors. It's important to note that because those first-time donors, especially if they do it in the high school, tend to become lifelong donors. And so, you know, the blood supply, it's always, there's always a need, so if you think about that yourself, you might go on down and donate. So Cookie Monster, what about the Cookie Monster? The middle school had a fundraiser, and these kids were from the advisory class that had the most attendance at the fundraiser at Judy's Creamery. So they got to make their own flavor of ice cream. Well, the kids didn't actually do it, they came up with the recipe. So it's Blue Moo Ice Cream with Cookie Dough with Sugar Cookies. And I got to sample that today, and of course, with me, ice cream is always good, no matter what you do to it, but this was especially good. Julie from Judy's came and gave the class a sample. They're going to have it at the Moraine location. She said it probably will last about two weeks, but once it's done, it's done. So go get a scoop of Cookie Monster. Speed, accuracy, and fun. This was a lot of fun this morning. I was over at the intermediate school, and they were doing math. And the kids are going as fast as they can, but they're also trying to be accurate. So it's a bit of a game as well. But they answered, I'll look at my notes, make sure I get this right, eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-eight problems in five minutes. Of course, this was the whole class, ninety-three percent accuracy. So they're having a lot of fun, they're challenging themselves from day to day to get better and improve those numbers. And testing is going on at Schnell, they were doing iReady testing. I'm sure Mrs. Jones will be giving us data about that at a later time. So the iReady tests, it's where they can follow their own progress, the staff can figure out what needs to be done as far as instruction and, you know, it was pretty quiet at the school today. So as always, watch for that information coming from your child's school. You'll get text information, email information, phone calls. Dr. Townsend sends out her weekly address as well. And these were a few of the doors at the intermediate school, and we wanted to wish everyone happy holidays, and this just seemed appropriate. And this is kind of hard to read, but it says, "Let your kindness shine," and I really love that. So during the holidays, be safe, be respectful, be responsible, be kind, carry that on into the new year. And then I wanted to thank our school board members, Joe Cox and Autumn Harvey. I know that you put in a lot of time to do what you're doing here, and we want to thank you. It's the last school board meeting for you, at least as an official member, unless you come back at some point. And I know. So, Mr. Cox and Ms. Harvey, their terms expire at the end of the year, and we want to thank you for your support during your time on the board, and I hope you will continue to be involved in the Pirate community. And I know you are a lifelong pilot, pirate, excuse me. You graduated from here, we won't go into the year, we'll just, we'll just say, "Once a pirate, always a pirate." And you are going to get a special gift. The official pirate flag.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So you can carry that with you for good luck. And remember us. So that is all I have this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Our number eight item on the agenda, there are presentations, we have two of them. Item five with PBIS by Mr. Toby and athletic update by Mr. Ivey, so we'll have Brad go first.
Janine, you're always a tough act to follow.
I tried to take it easy on you tonight, I really did.
You did, I appreciate that.
Okay.
No, I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Townsend, Mr. Sloan for having me. So PBIS, this is probably the third or fourth year I've come up here and presented. I just wanted to first start off saying, I'm really proud of this district, where we've come along this process. We started this seven years ago, planning it, administrators, teachers, support staff, and, you know, to still be doing it and doing it strongly and improving every year, I just want to say I'm really proud of the district for that. It's had a unique way of, you know, bringing administrators together. I mean, we're close to begin with, but we've had a lot of conversations shared about really being consistent and having common language. And over the last two years, that's something that the principals and, you know, Ms. Tyce have all sort of come together and really just streamlined it, just everything is comped. So, you know, thank you for that as well. Also, being here the last three or four years, you've heard just me talk, so you're tired of hearing me talk, so I'm going to leave it up to the kids.
This is Aisha. Aisha, what does, what are the three Bs, and what does PBIS mean to you?
The three Bs are respectful, responsible, and safe. And PBIS means to me to listen to the teacher and to help others.
This is Taylor. Taylor, what are the three Bs, and what does PBIS mean to you?
Be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. Be safe means, like, if there, we have a five, you don't run, because if you run, you trip, you might fall, or you might trip somewhere, and you run. And respectful means being kind to your teachers and not talking back. And be responsible means keeping up with your step.
This is Parker. Parker, how often do we have incentive parties, and what is your favorite incentive party, and why?
We have incentive parties every month, and my favorite one's in the school year one, because we get hot dogs, glow-ups, base tattoos, and pictures.
This is Oliver. Oliver, how do you earn PBS points, and then what do you use those PBS points for that you earned?
First, you have to respect others and be kind, and if you want, what you want to spend them on is, you could spend them on fun activities and events.
This is Jerry in Zyer. Jerry, how often do we have incentive parties, and what is your favorite incentive party?
We often have incentive party monthly, and my favorite one is the one we do at the end of the year.
Zyer, how do we earn PBS points, and what do we do with those points we earn?
Be safe, respectful, and responsible, and you spend them at incentive parties in the shop.
Thank you very much, Denise, for putting that together, but yeah, it's, you know, it's being consistent, and it's learning fidelity, and it's a, it's a fun thing to see on a day-to-day basis, so thank you.
Can you answer a question for me, while we're waiting? PBS is in every building, right? I know those were kids, but this program is, does the high school do this too, right?
Yeah, they do. It looks different in every building, obviously. You know, in the elementary, it looks a little bit different than the high school, but we're very consistent with what we use to reward everybody, we're very consistent in the system that we use. So the PBS rewards is across the board, incentivizing students, and what those incentives are are different in each building.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I have a question as well.
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
What is your favorite monthly PBS award?
My favorite one is, front of ice. Yeah, we bring front of ice in. It's the first one, so that's my favorite one. That, and we do a friends gazing one, where we have all the kids sort of take pictures together with another friend, and frame it, and it's fun. Oh, that's great. Well, thank you. No, AV is the one. That's all about it. Do you like that number three, Jack?
I did like that one, yeah.
Jack's granddaughter with us, the third one. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the athletic update and Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mr. Toby, for using cute adorable kids. I love that. So.
Give you statistics.
So we have a few, a few big things going on in athletics right now. As always, I like to recognize the previous sports season and the people that earned recognition. So for the fall, all-league honors, a whole bunch of people in football, I had to write all their names down here, so I can, don't have to squint too much. Brandon Foster was second team, all-league. If you were at the Pickle game where we, we beat them on homecoming night, he's the one that caught that pass, and we were down late, and he got a pass and took it to the house. It's why I love high school sports. It was, it was one of the most exciting games I've been to in my life, so. Honorable mention Joseph Ingram, Peyton Barbosa, Jaden Bennett, Cam Martinez, Antonio Robinson, and Bryson Jones. Most of these, actually all of them are playing either basketball or wrestling. Volleyball, Karen Cody and Bree Whitaker were honorable mention. Bree actually led the league in passing stats, and Karen was up there in kills, so we're very proud of both of them. Boys soccer, Aiden Bayless was second team, all-league, Ben Martin and Mark Holsher were honorable mention. Hallie Bowles, second team, she was, was the goal scorer in our two, two wins this year, so she was, she was very crucial to the success. And Peyton Harris, I swear she's been here for six years, because she started since a freshman, senior this year, three-sport athlete, starts every sport, great kid, great grades. She's actually playing basketball right now, because we have a game going on over at high school. Tennis, Amber Hootepole, Peyton Agee, Hunter Brewer, all second team in tennis. NBL competitions here, Zyer Clark, was first team, Mallory Montgomery, second team, and Emma Levin's second team as well. Okay, and this is, this is one of the things that I posted at the fall awards banquet, one hundred and five student athletes over three-point-oh GPA. I have to, I'll be the first one to tell you, it's a little bit misleading, because we have a lot of cheerleaders over four-point-oh GPAs that do fall cheer and competition, so they got counted twice. But yeah, you should see, when I put this one up at the fall awards banquet, all the kids were taking their phones out so they could take the picture and brag to each other. Girls soccer is just killing it, three-point-seven seventeen GPA. Yeah, competitions here, football cheer, a lot of them share the same kids. Boys soccer and tennis, all up there very high, it's great to see. This was, this was a fun one, going over to Centerville and seeing Coach Miller recognized. I was, it was a packed house, I was all the way in the back row, so luckily, the girls and coach got there early and got corner seats, so. Pretty cool, Leslie won Coach of the Year, Division One, Southwest Ohio. Our league was very recognized there as well, which we're very proud of. So we had, we had our three seniors with all-area academic honors, which was three-point-five GPA in season, and then sportsmanship award, which, you know, that's kind of one of the biggest, most important awards in my mind. Autumn always did a great job. And there's Leslie, Coach of the Year. Okay. So this is, this is the big one here. It's been in the works for a while, and this is kind of the perfect time we were going to do it, you know, the new year, new website kind of thing. So this is, this is what we've been working on, so athletics website, it does a lot to feature our student athletes and make things a little bit easier to navigate as far as finding schedules. There's a mobile app as well, where you can get alerts for score results. There's a bunch of different apps that we use and pay for, that this website does the same, same thing, so the Remind app, that kind of thing, you can message individual teams, parents, all that stuff, you can push out notifications, hey, varsity, basketball's delayed thirty minutes to everyone on there that has notifications turned on. So we have rosters with pictures of the student athletes, direct link to tickets, all the athletic stuff you could see under the inside athletics, including the Athletic Hall of Fame that we're working on populating, there's a lot of people in the Athletic Hall of Fame, so we're working with, with Emily Earl to get pictures from the yearbook, put in there. Sports medicine is on there as well, just because we have so many transportation waivers, that kind of stuff, so we wanted to make it easier. Listen, I can be able to scroll down to the bottom of this page, you don't have to click anything, but, so the app looks a little bit different, but it's all the same information, but, I'm sorry, I made, I apologize. So upcoming events, it's right there underneath the pictures, and you know, the more, the further we get into the season, the more pictures we'll have from the yearbook, yearbook hits, so those pictures on the slider will update. And if you scroll down just a little bit more, our Twitter account right there, and then it's, it's a little bit cleaner and easier to manage, so we're very excited. Somehow, westcarrolltopirates.com is still available, so we're very lucky. And we have, I have posters that we'll be putting all over the district, and you know, program and that kind of stuff too as well. So we have a lot of good things to be proud of, and I'm very excited.
I like to get those.
Yeah. Oh, it's, see, yeah, because if you, if you hover over sports, this is, would you click on boys' basketball real quick, or girls' basketball, the roster? That's one of the things that we will continue to work on as far as, you know, I was able to pull up, pull this up on my phone, and if I was in high school, this would be the coolest thing in the world, to see my picture right there. Of course, we have kids that weren't there on picture day, so we're waiting until we get the yearbook pictures of them to populate those. And then if you scroll up just a little bit, all the stuff on the right side would be announcements when coach, we haven't done coaches training on this yet, but announcements for the team, forums that would be relevant, including the transportation waiver, which is one of the biggest ones for us, and then it links, I link the NBL stats for boys' basketball and all the sports to their page, so they could just click on that. It takes you to the NBL website, because we'll, we aren't able to keep the accurate stats on our website, but.
It sends the score out too, same as the game observer, and you get the text message, that's really neat.
Yep. So it just, it's, and they also send us free tickets and free, all, all that kind of stuff, so. Stuff that we normally pay for is, the companies are starting to bundle them together and make it a little bit easier for athletic directors to kind of keep everything simple, as simple as possible, so. And that's all I have. That's it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff. We'll move on to item nine, on to Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. I ask that the board approve items nine A through nineteen as presented.
Just need a motion and a second, please. So moved.
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Sloan?
These are financial reports from July through November, and we're, we're running in good shape compared to the forecast, and also just compared to last year. Nothing of major significance to report on.
There's one, two, three, six donations as well, so we certainly appreciate all the folks responsible for those. We'll have them call the roll, Mr. Sloan.
Mr. Luell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, item ten, Mr. Berry.
Good evening.
Evening.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items, ten A through ten J.
Okay, just need a motion and a second, please. So moved. Second. Comments?
Yeah, on F, of course, that's always a welcome site for me, finding people from outside that are willing to come and substitute in our district. That's, that's pretty high need in the area right now, so if you know anyone, please let me know. I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mr. Luell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item eleven, back to Mr. Berry.
Item eleven, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the listed personnel items, eleven A through eleven C.
Just need a motion and a second, please. A motion. Second. This is pretty basic, too, any comments?
Yeah.
Nope. Mr. Sloan?
Mrs. Miller?
I'm staying.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Luell?
Yes.
All right, we stay with Devin. Item twelve.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve, as presented, the memorandum of understanding between West Carrollton, between the West Carrollton Education Association and the Board of Education of West Carrollton School District regarding section twelve-point-zero-two of Article twelve.
Okay, motion and a second.
Seven.
Second. Anything you want to say to this?
It's just to match the language of the retirement system.
Oh. It's S T R S. Thank you, you know I couldn't think of what that actually was. S T R S was, of course, when it started, it was thirty years, and then went to thirty-five. They revisited that a few years ago, and moved to thirty-four for the age of, not the age, I'm sorry, for the years of retirement to get the full amount. So the language that's written, that S T R S provides, whenever they change, we change, so we want our language, and we match their language at all times.
There we go. Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Luell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, I refer to you. And we'll move on to this. Melissa?
The superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement with the West, I'm sorry, with the Green County Educational Service Center as presented, and the contract with respect to educational program for a student, period beginning December one, twenty-twenty-three through November thirty, twenty-twenty-four, is presented.
Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments?
Yeah, actually, we have not contracted with Green County ESC before. We have contracts with Montgomery County and Morrin County, but Green County has offered something the past couple of years called Outdoor Advantage Program for students who really leave something very far removed from traditional schools, so for kids who really respond to, to nature and being active and growing things and building things, working with their hands, it's a great alternative. So we have our first student who's participating, and he's doing very, very well, engaged in what he's doing, and having a really positive impact on him.
That's interesting. My daughter is subbing in a school in Cleveland, it sounds kind of like that, they have alternate weight, they move the class around, they go outside, they do all kinds of things that are out of the norm, I guess you would say, for the students there, so it's, that sounds kind of like that.
But this classroom is outside. Yeah, period.
Some of theirs are too.
They come inside occasionally.
Some of theirs are too.
But, yeah, but it's, it's nice, it's a good option for, for kids, good to have a, a wide array of options.
Excellent. All right, Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Luell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
And we give Jack a chance to talk to him, item fourteen, please.
Hey, yeah, thank you. Superintendent recommends that the board approve, as presented, the resolution amending prior resolution authorizing purchase of school bus to correct a clerical error.
Motion and a second, please.
A motion. Second.
Well, third time's a charm for this school bus. Mr. Sloan said that on that last one, we did not have the purchase price of the bus, and he felt that was imperative we have that, so we're amending that to include the purchase price for the vehicle now, so finally we can hopefully get that picked up tomorrow and get that on the road course. Yes, and.
All right.
Is this the one from Bethel, and it's ready to pick it up?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
All right, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Luell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, item sixteen, we, that's the one?
I don't know you're supposed to.
Fifteen.
I'm gonna be in the list to the end.
All right, it's time to go to sixteen. Sixteen, we stay with Jack.
Okay, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the following transportation contract with senior assistants incorporated for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
All right, and a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question as well for this one.
Go ahead.
And I was just wondering, because I was reading it, the COVID procedures.
Um, and I was just wondering, cause I was reading it, uh, the COVID procedures, is that mandated by the state? Or is that just voluntarily done by, uh?
That would be their procedures.
I was wondering if that was them then. That is interesting. So.
All right.
Thanks. That's all I got.
All right, Mr. Sloan, Caldero, please.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Muddy.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Willem.
Yes.
All right, item seventeen, Jack.
Okay, yeah, um, we ask that the board adopt as presented the resolution and ratification authorizing the purchase of competitive retail natural gas services from the lowest responsible bid submitted to the Southwestern Ohio Purchasing Council for the period commencing July twenty twenty-five and terminating no later than June of twenty thirty.
Okay, motion and a second please.
A motion.
Second.
Any comments?
Um, yeah, we've been using a southwestern purchasing cooperative for quite a while to purchase our electric own gas, our utilities. We get a pretty, a really good rate on it. Um, this is a perfect time for this because we've had a pretty warm December. Rates have really fallen and we're looking, matter of fact, I've got a conference call on Friday to work on hedging out for the next two to three years on our utility prices to lock them in while they're low right now before they start to bounce back up again. So this is just trying to lock us in so we know what we're going to be paying for the next two to three years in, in gas and electric prices.
I have a question for this one. Um, are you the one that does the master supply agreement then? Are you the doesn't need for that?
I, I'm on the committee that works on that.
Oh, so there's a whole.
There's a, yeah, in the end, we'll have over three hundred schools involved in this purchase. And, uh, right now our rate is lower than what the municipality rate is that they just, uh, worked out through Miami Valley Cable Council.
Really?
So we're, we're going to be below that rate. It's just a matter of how far below it.
So just to understand, cause I remember, uh, when the city was going through all this, it was a really interesting process. So the rates that are right now, do they lock in for a certain rate?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll lock in our purchase and the way it is right now, because it's so, so volatile, the first twelve months is a pretty low rate, but then they start to bounce up and then you go twenty-four and thirty-six. But if we can lock them in here, hopefully within the next one to two months, we'll lock in a year to start with. And then we'll see what happens if we can keep locking them in.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Yeah. Currently, what we're paying right now, we locked in those utility rates three years ago. So when we were, fracking was big, the prices were way down. So we're getting one really good rate right now. So we're still living off of that rate for the next year. So we're in pretty good shape on that. But now we're trying to tie something up for the next five years.
Yeah. Wow, that is incredible. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Sloan, Caldero, please.
Mr. Muddy.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Willem.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
All right, Jack, you get a break. Item eighteen, I'm actually going to take care of. I need a motion and a second uh, from the board to approve as presented the resolution regarding rehire of Treasurer Ryan Sloan as a re-employed retirement. Motion and a second please.
Senior.
Second.
All right, um. Yeah, I said that right again. Anybody have any, um. Questions about this or conversation before we have, uh, Mr. Sloan Caldero for us. All right, Mr. Sloan.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Willem.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Muddy.
Yeah.
All right, so we move on to comments and reports. We need committee reports. I'm sorry, I'm just giving the students. I'm, my apologies guys.
Good for nothing, they thought. They're just sitting around.
Any comments from Denise or from Matt or both of you?
I just wanted to, um, congratulate Joe and Autumn, even though she's not here, um, just for, you know, moving on. And, um, just want to thank you both for, um, welcoming, welcoming me into, um, my position, especially Joe, since he's been here since I started, uh, Autumn as well. And, um, just thank you for, you know, guiding me into this role and, uh, showing me how this all works. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, um, thank you to Joe and Autumn. Uh, it's been great, like, getting to know you guys, even though I haven't been here that long. Um, and I know we had, like, talked about the blood drive. Um, I actually donated at the blood drive and this is the first time, so I was defer last year. But it's always like one of my favorite events we do at school because even though some of the students are nervous after it all happens, like, the kids are so happy. And I, a lot of kids have received, um, either emails or like text messages or phone calls that their blood's already been used on somebody else. Um, and I know a lot of the kids are saying that, like, made them really excited to see that they were saving somebody's life. And we're officially halfway done with the school year. So exam week starts next week for the high school. Uh, so that's exciting, a little nerve wracking for the seniors, but.
Got this though. No worries from us. All right, thank you guys. Now we'll move on to committee reports. Uh, anybody have anything to share there?
I have. That sounds a lot more ominous than it should be. Uh, I had district leadership, which is always great to go to, especially when I can make, uh, I know about it. Uh, so district leadership, um, there's a lot of really good things that happened. The main thing, it's Pan- Panorama, right? That's what it was?
Panorama.
Uh, we did what? It was a student survey from all the grades and it just kind of gave like a bunch of questions on, you know, what they like, what they don't like, all sorts of things. And I mean, it's very comprehensive. It's a lot of information. But it is incredible information as well to actually hear what the students have to say. Of course, we have wonderful state reps that represents our schools, but to hear it from the horse's mouth, it's just great to actually really dive in, hear what they have. I know, we also talked about, uh, grade appropriate assignments at like tiers. So like there's tier one, tier two, tier three. Um, some of it goes above my head. I am not a good educator, I guess. But it was very, very good information. I know, uh, the one thing that I really noticed in when I came to the panorama was the grades three to five, their big thing was school safety, which is something I was really wanting to look into because I wonder, I wonder why. I mean, I want to dive in and see what they're thinking about, what, what parts of school safety that we can maybe talk with and work on and improve upon. So, uh, hopefully as time goes on, we can kind of dive deep and see what's going on between those three and five, um, grades. Other than that, um, it was, I mean, just like everything else, fun, old activities that kind of show, like, what students learn. I know it's always a good time being with, uh, those people. So, uh, yeah, district leadership team is great. Other than that, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, Mrs. Townsend has the floor. Superintendent comments?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Joe and Autumn for your service. Um, I will miss both of you. Um, I appreciate the time and effort you both have put in. So thank you. Um, also, uh, Mr. Ivory's gone, but I wanted to let you all know that our district website is getting updated as well. It will be very similar to what the athletic website does. We'll have an app. Um, it takes over several systems, our newsletter, our one call, um, class dojo, many, many things. And it'll be dynamic and I'm very excited that this is coming. We've been looking at doing this for a while. Um, and that we meet with them next week to have our pickup meeting. Um, I just also want to wish everybody a happy holidays, happy safe and enjoyable break.
All right, um, Mr. Sloan, anything tonight, sir?
Uh, just to, to echo that, just a huge thank you to, to Autumn and Joe. Um, greatly, it's been great working with both of you and, um, just greatly appreciate the support and just wish the best to you and your family and hope you stand up, sorry.
All right, um, we move on to central office staff. Mr. Berry.
Sure, wanted to, uh, welcome, uh, Denise first and congratulate Leslie, yeah, for, um, and then, uh, but thanks like everyone else, so Autumn and Joe, uh, for the past eleven years. Uh, he's always been supportive and, and I appreciate that and, um, and thank you. Um, and thanks to the Gibson family.
She mentioned Steve Little's play. She'll be back.
And happy holidays.
Yeah, well, yeah, we want to welcome old man Sloan back to the table.
He's now driving a bus from Bethel.
Yeah, and so yes, congratulations to Ryan for sticking around with us for years to come. Uh, also thanks to Autumn and to Joe. You've done a great job as board members and appreciate the time that we've had to work with you. It's been a lot of fun. Um, also Merry Christmas to everybody. I guess we won't be back before, uh, before Christmas. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Welcome to Denise.
Julie.
I feel like we should just all speak in unison since we're, same thing. So, yeah, um, Ryan, glad to be continuing to work with you. Um, you've done a great job and have always been very helpful. Um, since in curriculum, we, we have a lot of purchases and we do a lot of spending. So I appreciate all your guidance and, and your whole office as well. Um, and Denise, uh, welcome. I know that this week, well, really since after Thanksgiving, the high school has had, has been in testing world. So with all the high school, uh, retake tests and then exams next week, so you all will be ready for a, a restful holiday break and well deserved. And, um, finally just want to say, um, thank you, congratulations, um, for the, for the job. Well done. Uh, Autumn and Joe, Joe, you've been, um, here since I, I started five years ago and I know you've served longer. So we just appreciate your service and, um, enjoy, enjoy those Wednesday nights off.
All right, Jack.
Did a, no. Um, I will say, uh, item fifteen, pulled from the agenda, uh, storage building. They didn't get us the cost on it until late Monday afternoon. Um, we held it for it, but then Tuesday I was in meetings all day on the building project from eight until five. So I had no chance to review it and there was no way we were going to present it to the board without having a chance to go through it and look at it. Um, I felt their scope was too big on this first iteration of the storage building and bus garage or the bus lot renovation. So we will go back to the drawing board, we're going to work on our scope, bring that price down and we'll bring it back to you hopefully by the, uh, January third, board meeting. Is what we're shooting for on that. On that, Ryan, um, thank you. I really don't want to have to bring in new treasurer, you know, so I'm glad you're just sticking around a little bit. Um, Joe, it's been a pleasure. Appreciate everything you've done for the district. Everything you've had to do for the district has been great. Um, well, gunshot first, but it's been great. So thank you very much. And same for Autumn. I appreciate her stepping up when we needed somebody and helping to fill, fill the void on the board and continuing that service as we move forward. And that, have a safe and wonderful holiday season and we'll see you back here in twenty twenty-four.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, board comments. We'll start. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I've got a paper up under me. You think I've only been doing this for two days? All right, uh, we do have comments from the public. Mr. Arthur, how do you say your last name? Millak?
Miller.
Miller. That's. I'm sorry. Mr. Miller, the, uh, states here, just a reminder to you, sir, that, uh, we do allow five minutes for comments. And if you do kind of push five minutes, we'll just give you a little, uh, nod to your close. If you want us, go ahead.
Hey, everyone. Uh, most of my questions were actually answered during this meeting. I was going to talk about the curriculum for the kids, how are we working on improving things for the district? And what are some resources we're using outside? Of course, the amazing Mrs. Tyce answered that with the Green County statement in Warren County and there was another one, correct? Montgomery County. So that was great to hear. Other things regarding the curriculum, um, I work with a lot of foster kids and mentor a lot of youth in a community on my own time. And one of the things that I see as a challenge is, uh, coming from an environment of poverty. My parents weren't able to do much. Um, and the parents, of course, can't always get on the kids at school, but you have some amazing teachers and administrative staff in our district that are thinking of new ways to teach the kids. One of the things that I saw Ms. Janine talk about is, uh, challenging the kids to see how fast they can get things done. That is amazing, cause I actually did that with one of my foster kids and realized that it really does work. Uh, that was something that I did in my youth and it was amazing that multiplication because of that. So it's great to see that, uh, regarding Mr. Toby's P D, uh, P D I S statements. I do know a lot about that program because my foster kids came to me all the time after finishing school and they're like, hey, I'm not going to say that now. But it was always this excitement, like, hey, I'm, I want to do good because I want to, you know, get this award or I would get notifications from the school app and it would let me know as the parental figure in a household, my child is doing what they're supposed to do. So it's not only great for the kids, it's great for the parents. It creates less worry because let me tell you, I get kids from all different types of backgrounds. You never know what's going on, but I've noticed that with the West Carrollton School District, it is definitely improving. Um, mentioning the mental health services too, I could already see that's eventually going to come because it's coming with working with Green County, having kids outside of the school building because you've all, you've all worked with one of my kids, so he works better outside. So I just want to say, uh, thanks. This, this is just, um, amazing district. I'm glad to be here. It's going on two and a half years, three years. So thanks, everyone, and Merry Christmas. Have a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll jump the gun. I apologize for that. Um, we'll start with board comments with Mr. Nick Muddy. Go ahead, sir.
All right, so, um, first of all, the blood drive, uh, those are always fun. I remember, uh, when I took the blood drive, I, it's pretty popular how many times I pass out, which is every single time.
You pass out every single time. I know this.
Yeah, I, it is, it's pretty popular that I pass out every time. So for those who can give blood and actually stay awake while they're doing it, um, I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely a fantastic thing. Um, do we still do the blood cords?
Yes, it is.
See, like, so like that is only even more incentive to actually be a part of, uh, you know, giving blood. Not only are you saving lives, but you also get an extra cool cord when you graduate. So I think you have to do it three times to the blood. Yeah, so I, I did it all three times. It, I don't remember any of it, but I'm sure it was good. So, um, hopefully I saved somebody out of all that, but, um, I know that was, uh, definitely something. So thank you guys for giving your blood. I know that means a lot to a lot of people and, you know, it's, it's definitely a big deal. Um, I also want to thank people for the donations. Uh, there's a whole list of donations on that. I can go through the list, but it'll take me a while. But, um, I just want to thank everyone that donated, just in general, uh, for our school and their passion for our kids. That's always an important thing. Um, Ryan, uh, you know, I hope you have a happy retirement. Hey, Ryan. Happy retirement. So, uh, now I'm happy to see you back. Uh, I was starting to miss you there. And, uh, uh, yeah, really, Ryan, you know, dealing with you, I just, I love you, man. I, there's amazing, amazing things that you can do. You know what you're talking about. You've been in the game for a while. You know, I'm just so happy that you're able to stick with us for a little while or longer and, I mean, I'm just grateful for you is what I really wanted to say out of that. And then, um, of course, good luck on the testing, uh, for all the kids that have to test, especially environmental science. Um, I know that's a hard one. Mr. Newman, he's, he, he makes it, he makes it real. So good luck to everyone when it comes to testing. And then this is the part I wasn't really looking forward to. I'm a naturally emotional guy, so I'm going to try to like hold it back. It's already not starting well. Uh, so of course I do quote, and, uh, it's by Denzel Washington, great guy. Uh, I don't know. It's, uh, I don't care what you do for a living. If you do it well, I'm sure there's someone cheering you on, showing you a way, a mentor. Funny enough, Autumn's great, you know, me and her have been good friends. But Joe, he's been a mentor for me when I was a kid in school, a student. So seeing him move on, all my friends, his kids, you know, I still, he's one of my, he's like a parent to me. Sorry. I said I tried to, I regret it. I tell everybody that you're a mentor, but you're one of my best friends and I'm grateful for you. Oh, goodness. I really am. I'm sure no one can hear this on the camera. But really, you mean the world to me. I wish you the best of luck. You know, I'm always here for you. So. I'm done.
My phone call, wait. You know what?
Love you, man.
All right. Let's go to Leslie.
Great, thanks. I have to follow.
Yeah, I don't want to, so you get to.
Well, I'd like to welcome Denise to the table. It's nice to have both of you here. We've got a lot on the slate coming up in January and February with the student rep program, so I'm sure you will be quite busy with all of those things. Ryan, I hired you first time. And here I am hiring you back, so.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, we've had a long, long time together. And hopefully it continues. You did a wonderful job as treasurer here for this administration. We're very appreciative of how you worked. Let's see here. We, I had Autumn as a tennis player, so it was great to have her come on board because I had known her as a player and now I got to know her as a professional and a mother and a board member. And she stepped into the world very easily and she did a great job. I'm going to miss her dearly, so hopefully she feels better. It was too bad she couldn't be here this evening. Joe, I'm happy to call you my friend. We didn't start off on a great way.
Not so good.
Not so good. But we learned about each other, I think, and we then respected each other through the whole ordeal as VP, president, president, VP, that sort of thing. We learned to rely on each other. You will be greatly missed. And I wish you good luck in all these fishing trips that you're gonna take. And I know you're going down south somewhere eventually. Eventually. So I wish you good luck and all that goes with it. I'm sure you won't have many fishing opportunities down there. Have a great, lot of doctorate.
Thank you.
Just happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all of those good things. Do stay safe. We, you know, the kids will have a few extra days after New Year's this year, so I know you're gonna drive your parents nuts, but you know, it's, you will be going back to school on the eighth, so you might wanna bum up on a few things before you come back in on Monday. That's all I can, thank you.
Thank you. Now, normally, the board president does this last, but I'm gonna go up there. Joe's gonna go last, so.
Be ready.
So I'm gonna share a couple of comments and then I'm gonna talk about Joe as well. So Denise, welcome. Glad to have you see, have a seat up here before the work of the rest of the school year. Ryan, glad your seat's still warm down there for you. We appreciate you being willing to stay with us. We had a lot of work coming up with the phases of the going project that are still to come and the opening of those buildings, and we really need your expertise as part of that process. And we're glad you're willing to stick around and help us finalize that. One thing about Autumn, as some of you may know, she, she had a seat at the table because we lost a member of our board, Mr. Henry who passed away. She was one of a few members in the community who stepped up and came and interviewed with us, which is certainly a bit nerve wracking to do. Done that myself before, so I know several of us have here how nerve wracking that can be. And she, she stepped up and she, for a little over a year and a half, has been a member of our board. And she had a fever tonight, so she didn't wanna make anybody sick. That's just the kind of person she is. And so I certainly want her to know publicly that we're very grateful for her time with us. She has a legal background as well, so that was one of the aspects of her interview that we really appreciated and really helped us kinda set her apart when it came to choosing board members to take Don's place. And lastly, Joe, we have a Pirate Pride Award for you. Can we give you that first? He is certainly gonna be missed. And Keith and Laura, you have some shoes to fill, so I think you're figuring that out tonight. We look forward to that, though, and enjoying this. But Joe is, he threatened a couple of years ago that he'd do this and leave after six years, and so he's certainly been a good friend to me. That's not gonna change. That's just why people get emotional about him is because he is a genuine person. And so I'm gonna miss having you here too. It's gonna be weird to sit here without you. We started that same time. We both had a lot to do with one or the other ran in the first place. And I certainly have appreciated, you know, you picking up the phone when I call you. We're both involved in Pirate Packs as well, so that's not gonna change either. So he's still not put up with me, son, but I greatly appreciate your, your service to the kids. We both had kids graduate, and to me, one of the biggest honors to sit here is giving your childhood a phone. That is really, really a unique thing to do. Not too many people get a chance to do that, and Joe and I both got a chance to do it twice. So I'm gonna shut up now and we'll let Joe make his comments and then we'll, we'll move on to a work session here in a moment. Go ahead.
I've got a few things tonight. You know, over the years, I've been kinda the person that stirs the pot a little bit. So tonight at dinner, before I came here, both my sons were sitting there. I said, you know, was it really that bad that I was on the school board? And my youngest son, who's, if, a lot of you know Jake, and he is zero filtered. So the first thing he says is, yeah, will you guys change the GPA for the athletes? Which was funny that Mr. Hager was here tonight talking about that.
It was good.
So the flack that I caught from him and his friends because of what we decided to do as a board, I was just so happy to see those, those GPAs so high. So that's, that's just, you know, just what we do. We try to make things better and, and as a board, over the years, six years worth, when John and I were becoming friends and starting up Pirate Packs, Mr. Henry came to us and asked us to help. John and I came and talked at a few board meetings. We talked after board meetings. We started Pirate Kids Matter and things like that. You know, all of those things were just immersed with the kids and it's been just an honor to be part.
Take it easy.
Round to everybody.
I can't thank all of you enough. Andrea and I had conversations at five o'clock in the morning. Had our coffee. She knew I was up, I knew she was up, so even when I wasn't present, we still had a few conversations about certain things. You know, Leslie talking about, we didn't start off from the right foot. Of course, poking the bear both directions didn't, didn't make us the best of friends upfront. But, you know, as, as time came, you know, the, we became better coworkers and better team members and then friends. Mr. Henry was somebody that I leaned on a lot. And unfortunately, we lost him. Mr. Wolfman, I did not see eye to eye on a lot of things. And some phone calls that I got from him after our board meetings or after our executives or after our work sessions, you know, he's always very cordial, very nice, and he was always just a handful. But what a wealth of information and what a, what a great person to be around. Ryan, we've had our conversations. We had my questions that I know, I don't know much about finance, so some of the questions I kinda beat around the bush and some of the questions I didn't know what I was asking. So thank you for being patient. Denise and Maddie, you guys have a, have a happy year left. Best of luck to you. I'm sure you'll do great these next, these next two quarters, next semester. Enjoy it, have fun, and we'll be looking forward to a good start in the college career. So good luck to you, guys. Administration staff, I know I've asked every one of you a question at one time. Thanks for being patient. I think Jack said it was a little quiet upfront at first, a little shy. All of that changed quickly, of course. You know, some of the things that we've done over the years, Mr. Berry and I with basketball, Mr. Hague and I trying to get Pirate Packs with John and getting that coordinated and all of our administration at the schools helping out Pirate Packs. Janine, Denise, Kathy, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you guys. I've probably known Denise the longest here. We started back in first grade with the kids at Schnell. We've done a lot of Schnell barnacles, a lot of float building, a lot of, lot of parade stuff, a lot of basketball, a lot, there's so much basketball. And of course, Mr. Henry and his wife Connie coming to me on the basketball court when I just had double knee surgery and asking me to take over, try to help take over and Bill with John and a few other volunteers to bring back Pirate Packs. And now we're serving ten percent of our student population. So thank you to everybody. It's been a pleasure serving with all of you. I can't say thank you enough. I'm not going anywhere. I mean, I'll still be around. New board members, oh, I'll be watching. And the old board members know that I won't be quiet about it, and if I see something that I don't like, you know, I'll stir the pot again. They'll just be from that side of the table. So good luck to you, guys. You got a lot to learn. So as much as you can, ask as many questions as you can. This entire staff is great to work with. So best of luck to you, guys. Besides that, thank you very much and have a Merry and a Safe Christmas. I'll see you all soon.
All right.
We can stop talking at that.
All right, we are, I don't believe, Richard is right. We're not really gonna adjourn. We gotta go into work session.
Exactly.
What we're gonna do, for anybody who's interested, we're gonna have a brief moment here after the meeting before we go into the work session, if anybody wants to chat with Joe before he adds out of here. But we are gonna have a work session to discuss our regionalization meeting, which we will have in January. So we will kind of take a ten or fifteen minute break here and then we will resume with our work session to discuss January.